Meeting to order. George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Rosan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Naso?
Here.
All present.
So, stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
That brings us to district goals. Every board meeting, we talk about our district goals. The first one being student achievement, that's our number one goal. That's what everything's focused on and we do it with all our heart. The second goal, financial prudence, is where we try to make every tax dollar count for the most. So, we work hard every day. George, the team, everybody works hard to make sure that we squeeze every bit of education we can get out of every dollar. And we do that very well. The last goal is community engagement. In community engagement, we try to work with our community members to make sure that we get help from them because they've got a lot of specialties, they've got a lot of knowledge, they've got a lot of heart. You've got Coach Bear Von back there who's like the epitome of community engagement. He's always helping, he's always here, and he does an incredible job. Him and his wife volunteered countless hours for this district. So, really, really cool with that. And those are our district goals. With that, I just want to, one little thing, I just want to say I want to welcome our new school board members. We're going to have two new school board members. I think, I've been here about nine years, we've had a really good run. I challenge them to do better. Our children deserve better and we've got to keep making things better every day, process improvement, keep making it better. And I know we've got the right people to do it. So, I welcome you and I say, "Thank you, you've got it, you've got the effort, the spirit, do it." With that, we'll move on to public comment. We have only one public comment tonight. And that would be Chris Miller. Step up, you've got three minutes. State your name, your address, and go from there.
Just three minutes?
Just three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Miller. I reside at 11860 Ridge Cliff Circle. I'm a Strongsville resident of 15 years and I'm a Mustang. I'd first like to take the time to congratulate Richard, Laura, and Michelle for their wins on Tuesday, become members of the Strongsville School Board for the next four years. I've heard that the school board will be the new regime and after the votes that were cast on Tuesday, our community has spoken and will look forward to your board leadership for our schools. I would also like to take the time to congratulate and recognize a man who changed and revolutionized the landscape of our school system through unselfish donation of his time, knowledge, expertise for the past nine years. That man is simply known to his friends and family as Carl. To list the accomplishments of the Strongsville School Board under Carl's leadership would take a lengthy PowerPoint presentation and a catered lunch break somewhere in between. I don't have that here, I apologize. And I have three minutes. That man is simply known to his friends and family as Carl. To list whether, whether in the beginning it was making sure that the kindergarten students got their bus service back, or that his profession and his skills in CPA were instrumental in pulling our schools out of a payroll budget and deficit, or having upgraded our school district bond rating through Moody's, that was Carl. Carl successfully guided our community and schools through a tumultuous strike and forged relationships with the mayor of the union and the teachers so that these events didn't take place again under his watch. Seeking out and finding the best treasurer in the state of Ohio to work for the Strongsville Schools so that previous financial issues would never plague this district again, or hiring a top-notch superintendent to plot out our children's educational future was yet again Carl. As an accomplished high school and college wrestler, friends, family members of Carl, as well as adversaries of our school system, know that taking it to the mat is quite easy for Carl. Just ask the Cleveland Clinic Foundation where Carl didn't hesitate to go to the mat and retrieve a good portion of the funds that were taken from our schools. The special part of Carl's position on the school board over the past nine years, as it is success as the school board president, can actually be measured and graded through data and statistics, as well as initiatives defined and, excuse me, initiatives met. If you're in the room tonight or watching this at a later date online and you're a middle-aged man like myself, I think we can all agree that global society has become soft over the past two decades. Today is, today is the day of participation awards and making sure that everyone is recognized, even if in fact they're just average. Gone are the days of being the best of the best and having a bust at the Canton Pro Football Hall of Fame or an Olympic gold medal. These people are extraordinary, few and far between. Those who truly know Carl will all say that first and foremost, he's a great father and a great husband and a great friend. Those who work with Carl can probably say that he's intense, he's driven and passionate and that giving anything but 100% effort is unacceptable. The Carl I know is all the above and you know what? Sometimes, sometimes, if you listen close enough, you may hear Carl make a joke about his height. In conclusion, I'm going to circle the wagons and I'm going to go back to the medals and the awards in our soft participation society. Some of us can show off medals, a gold watch for years of service, a trophy, or a participation certificate. Carl, his beautiful wife Tina, and his beautiful wife, or daughter Kirsten, are able to do something every day that none of us will ever be able to do. Something that a Hall of Fame football player or an Olympic gold medalist will never be able to do. Yes, the football player has a Boston and Canton, the Olympic athlete has a gold medal, but how many people can get in their car every day, take a sip of coffee, drive down to Pearl Road, look over at the magnificent school for the next 40 years, middle school, and say, "That was my husband," or "That was my dad"? I personally just look over at it and say, "Carl." So, thank you.
Thank you all. Those accomplishments were mine and our school boards. So, we've done an incredible job over that time. So, thank you for your kind words. And with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Thank you. Someone might have noticed, my entire family is sitting out there today, so they all wanted to come up and say hi, so, and a lot of my friends. So, thank you very much for showing up, I appreciate it. It means a lot to me that you're all here. Thank you. Thank you. If any, you know, we'll go into the superintendent's report and then if anybody's interested, we're going to talk about the state report card if somebody wants to see that. After that, it's going to get a bit dry and it might be a good time to like sneak a...
Scoreboard.
What's that?
Scoreboard project.
Yeah, scoreboard projects, okay. So, Cameron, your call.
All right, thank you, Mr. Naso. Aaron Green is going to, our director of curriculum is going to join me at the podium to kind of give some highlights and discussion about our state report cards. Let me scoot over there, we'll get started. So, as we know, every year, the state gives us a report card on our performance and the work that we're doing as a school district. The report card comes out early in the fall, September-ish, mid-September, we get a report card. So, what we wanted to do tonight for the Board of Education and our community is to share a little more than what's shared just in the newspapers each year, share some of the successes and why we've seen those successes in recent years, as well as highlight some areas for enhancement and what we're going to be working on. But before we do that, I think it's important that we take the state report card, which gets a lot of play in newspapers and a lot of discussion, and really put that into perspective. So, I shared this with the Board of Education in my weekly update and I'd encourage audience participation here as well. So, the question I have is why do we educate students? So, think about it for a second. What is the purpose of our role as a school district and why are we here and why do we educate students? So, any board members, you have any ideas that you'd like to share?
Prepare them for the next stage in life.
Richard, I see you have, you did your homework well, you have a list?
Allow them to understand the world around them.
Can I say global perspective, is that okay?
If you want to cheat.
I think I'm showing why I shouldn't write on the board because handwriting is like hieroglyphics. One more, one more about why we educate students.
You surely write like a doctor.
Oh, thank you.
Why do we educate students?
Succeed in life. You know, know how to relate to people.
How about would you, you appear succeed in life? I should. How many Cs in succeed?
Two.
Do you?
You don't have spell check on that?
I'm being vulnerable in sharing that I don't know all the answers. And will you build meaningful relationships?
You could say become a productive member of society, but that contains all of that pretty much.
I think it does. So, as we take a look at this, these are, these are what we're defining and as a quick view of what we define, what is our purpose? Why are we doing the work we're doing? Is to prepare our students for their next stage or success in life, to make sure that they have a global perspective, to have meaningful relationships with others. And the two that are in the green box there, the reason I didn't ask that is I just wanted to add two that are down there. One is pass tests and the other one is to graduate. So, as we take a look at these, and we take a look at this in terms of what we do in schools, Aaron, can you help me out so I don't have to keep moving back and forth? Thank you, and I'll trip. I appreciate it.
I'm sure she can spell better.
Yeah, she sure can. So, the next question, as we look at these, are they easily measured? If we want students in our, in our district and in our society to be prepared for their next stage and be able to be successful in life, is that something that's easily measured? Yes or no?
No.
No. Is it easy to measure whether or not kids have a global perspective?
No.
No. Is it easy to measure whether students are able to develop and sustain meaningful relationships?
Yes.
You think so? How would you measure that?
I would measure that with the friends that they have in their building currently.
Okay. Good.
How many friends they have on Instagram.
Right, right. All right, so we'll say yes there. How about, could we say it's, you can measure it?
But it needs...
I don't know if it's easy?
It's conditional.
It's conditions, yeah. So, maybe like a yes, no, maybe?
Just maybe.
Yes, maybe.
Perhaps.
Is it easy to measure whether a student can pass tests?
Yes.
Yes. Is it easy to measure whether kids can graduate?
Yes.
Quickly, is the, is it in our state accountability system?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. And finally, is it forward or backward looking? Meaning, when we're measuring it, is it looking towards what students need to be able to do and the skills have in the future, or is it looking what they've already done?
Looking forward.
Yes, 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 no, no.
Yeah. Forward, 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 backwards, backwards. So, here's the purpose of this activity and this discussion. State, the state report card is an important measure, yet it is one measure of what we do as a school district. And as we take a look at the board, and I'm sure the folks in the audience would share similar thoughts, when we truly think about what are we here to do, what's our purpose and why are we educating students, the things that we value and the things that are important are typically not easily measured, they're not on the state accountability system, and they're looking in the direction we want to look for our students, which is how are we preparing them for their future versus looking in the rearview mirror and seeing how did they perform in the past? And so, as we take that, as we take a look at that and take that into consideration, can you erase that? All right, you're doing a great job. But does that make sense? Does that resonate? I mean, I think it's important to take a look at what we do in schools is beyond a state test score. And what we provide to our students and the work that our teachers do is, is beyond a state test score. So, just as we go throughout this discussion, I challenge all of us to keep this in mind as, as the Plain Dealer and other organizations want to rank us from top to bottom. And as you look in the Plain Dealer, what do they use to rank us? They use a score called Performance Index, which we'll talk about. And if you truly look at the study between the highest school districts in the state in Performance Index and you look at their poverty level, it is a direct correlation. Performance on state test scores in terms of student achievement is directly correlated to poverty. Meaning, the highest districts scoring on state tests have the lowest poverty level and the school districts that are performing at the lowest have the highest poverty level. What does not differentiate between high or low poverty is how much growth we're able to see in our students. There was another study recently completed by Ohio State, which, it's got to be legit, right? It's from Ohio State. But the, what the study said is you can take a student from a low-performing school and put them in a high-achieving district and they will learn at the same rate. You could take a student from a high-achieving school and put them in a low-performing school and they'll achieve at the same rate. The difference is not what school they go to, the difference is their starting point when they enter school. That's what achievement is. It's a measurement of how ready do students come to our classrooms. The ability of us to get them to learn and grow is consistent no matter what school district you're in, and we're lucky to be in a school district where the majority of our students come ready to learn and we're able to see significant growth. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, who's going to talk a little bit about our state report card and the successes that we've seen. Aaron?
All righty, thank you. We're going to, as Dr. Riba said, transition for a minute to our last two years of the state report card. So, this is 2018. If you recall, we had an overall B for the district grade and it's comprised of six accountability measures that are listed there. Looking at the most recent 2019 state report card, you can see that again, we achieved a B as the overall district grade and we did have the achievement measure rise from a C to a B in the component grade. Now, tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the successes that we've seen. We're going to highlight the progress and the gap closing. And we're not going to specifically talk graduation, but from the other measures that we will discuss, it's indirectly related or potentially directly related. And we also fare really well every year with graduation rate. We meet it with As and we're higher than similar districts every year. So, first, looking at progress. As a reminder, progress is talking about students and are they making growth year to year? So, it's talking about not so much are we just passing the test, but are all students making a year's worth of growth? And as you can see on the slide there, we look at different subgroups of students. So, we look at students identified as gifted, students with disabilities, and students in the lowest 20% of achievement. As the state considers a C as one year's growth, us earning As in 2019 in all of those areas bodes really well. That's showing that we made more than a year's worth of growth in all of those subgroups listed there. The other area we want to highlight that we feel is a pretty good measure is gap closing. And so, this looks at all students and not just our high-performing students or those that pass the test, but those who are traditionally underperformers. And those are subgroups that are set by the state of Ohio. They are based on some of the items you see there, race, English learners, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged. We have nine out of the 10 subgroups and as you could see there highlighted, we earned an A in both 2018 and 2019, meaning that we're providing an equitable education for all of our students in Strongsville. Now, reasons for the success, of course, we have to attribute it to our hard-working students, our dedicated teachers and staff, we have our community and family support, as well as our administrators who are in the buildings every day doing the work. Additionally, we came up with four areas in which we think highlight or ways that we're seeing these reasons for success. So, on here, we have four overarching areas. The first one is talking about evidence-based instructional practices. And there are a couple items listed. The one I want to just focus on for a minute is the writing instruction. So, if you recall, we've talked about writing for multiple years now and it was part of our instructional innovation plan three years ago. It's been part of 2020 Plan, it's part of the literacy grant as well. And so, with that increased focus that we've had on writing from pre-K through grades 12, we're starting to see the payout of that. The second area is targeted instructional resources and supports. So, for this one, I want to highlight the, the sub-bullet there of the Lexia implementation. And Lexia is a computer program, but it also has a personal teacher touch, meaning kid doesn't just sit on the computer, but when they struggle, teachers intervene. And so, through the Striving Readers Grant that we obtained, we were able to not only hire three fabulous elementary literacy coaches, but also able to invest in this program. And it's a reading program for elementary students grades K through 5. And what's really unique about it is that it differentiates what instruction each student needs based on where the holes and the gaps are. So, we've seen a lot of, a lot of success in the one year that we had it last year. We're again using it next year and this year. And we ran some correlational studies, we actually had researchers run them at no cost to us, but they found a direct correlation between how students do on Lexia and the state exams at the end of the year. Moving on, the third area are the integrated internal assessments. You've heard us talk for a while about the common assessments. And so, when we put these into place a few years back, what it did is it helped students in, we'll say, fourth grade, third grade, whatever grade level or whatever subject area, content area, all have the same assessment. And that ensured that teachers were teaching the same content from the standards to all students. And we could look at that data and know where we needed to improve, both teaching and learning and then outcomes of students. And lastly, we have, the fourth area is increased instructional and collaboration time. So, this one focuses on time. More time on task, more time in classes for students, for them to learn and grow. Also, structured time for our professionals to collaboratively target needs of students. So, something to highlight for this area, in our elementary buildings, we have what we call intervention data meetings. They aren't long, but they give the teachers a chance to get together with the principal, the psychologist, maybe the Title I teacher or the EL teacher, and talk about individual students. Where are their gaps? Where do we need to focus our interventions? How can we specifically help each of these students that is at risk and struggling? From that, we target our interventions and this is all part of the multi-tiered instruction systems of support, excuse me, or the MTSS product. The MTSS, that's the word I'm looking for. We'll just say MTSS. So, again, that helps differentiate so we're not teaching all kids the same way in all classes. We know exactly what each student needs. So, moving forward here, Dr. Riba's going to talk about some enhancements.
So, as we talk about and just summarize from the successes we've seen, gap closing, we had straight As in every aspect of the report card, which I think, as Aaron said, that's important because what it says is we're not only seeing successes with all of our students, but we're seeing successes with all different student groups within our organization. The progress, which I talked about, that's really a measure that I think has significant value because what it is measuring is our ability as a school district to get a student from point A to point B and see significant growth. And if we take a look at that a C is considered adequate growth in a year, we are getting a, not only in how we're seeing growth with all students, but in every single category of gifted, students with disabilities, the lowest 20% of students achieving, that we're seeing, you know, two times as much if you want to say that in terms of the letter grades of growth there, and we're graduating students that are prepared to move on into college career, military, beyond. So, we want to take a look at where we need to put some focus and that area is achievement. Now, when we take a look at growth, growth is how much a student has developed over the course of the year. Achievement is a static line. The state has set, here is the line for achievement, here's the score you have to get on a test, and it's a binary measure. Either you get that score or you don't. It doesn't matter whether you've gained 40 points or whether you declined, as long as you're above that line, you met the achievement measure. So, this is an area where we need to focus some efforts and to improve. And so, there's two areas in the achievement measure. The first one is the Performance Index score. So, what that takes a look at is how well did you do on the test? And the state has come up with five different categories. You may have heard of them, of advanced, accelerated, proficient, basic, and limited. And so, they give a point level for how students performed on each of those tests. The second thing that's out there is indicators. That's simply a fancy way to say, how, what are the tests and how many of, how many tests were passed? The state has set a benchmark that says you need to have 80% of kids pass the test to get a checkmark in that box. So, if I'm in fourth grade math, we need 80% of all fourth grade math students to pass that test and if we do, we get a checkmark. If we don't, we get a red X. Makes sense? So, what we did, we did, as Aaron said, we did improve our achievement grade from a C to a B in this past school year. And Performance Index is, is an area where we've seen consistent growth. So, this is a graph that shows our Performance Index score over the last four years. And so, if you just look, it went from a 94.8 to a 99.9, which is a good amount of growth in the overall measure. The other part that I think is important to note is that these colors that I mentioned equate to those labels. So, blue at the top is actually something called Advanced Plus. That means if you're taking, I'm a seventh grade student or I'm an eighth grade student and I'm taking Algebra I, I get a little bonus point because I'm taking a test a year before I should have taken that test. But what we've seen, if you take a look at the black or the gray, that highest area of advanced, we've not only seen our Performance Index go up, but we've seen our, our advanced, the students that are scoring at the highest level of achievement in our district has grown over the last four years. What we've also seen is the lowest performing students in that basic and limited has declined. So, we're proud of those efforts that we're reducing the number of students that aren't meeting that benchmark and increasing the number of students that are hitting the highest levels on this measure. Now, the area of indicators is where focus needs to be placed and that's the measure of how many tests are we getting above 80% or below 80%? So, what I've shared on the screen here for you tonight are the seven assessments in which we, this past year, that we did not hit that 80% benchmark. However, there's a couple things that I wanted to share, just to give context to this, because you talk about percentages, what does that mean? That means in fourth grade, in English Language Arts fourth grade, we had 78.4 proficiency rate. When you take a look at how many students took that test, and students that took that test, they range from mid-300s to low-400s in each of the grade levels or areas, that's six students. If you look at math fifth grade, that's once, literally, one student that if one more student would have passed the test, we would have hit the 80% benchmark and so on and so forth. So, if you take a look at this, this chart, we're averaging six and a half students per test that we didn't hit the indicator that we need to help support to reach that achievement level so we can meet that indicator. My point of saying this is we are really close and we've seen this growth. If you look at our scores a few years ago, we've seen significant growth in these scores. Our students are working and growing and developing based on the, the work of our administrators and teachers. And so, we've seen great efforts. We have two tested areas where we see where we were one student away from meeting that indicator. Where you see the asterisk over there, what that is representing is even though we didn't meet that indicator, we performed at a higher rate than similar districts. If you look at our state report card, the state looks at a variety of factors and it qualifies similar districts to you. So, like Westlake and North Royalton up in this part of the area is a similar district to us and they're considered in that. In, in those measures, the four that are there, we didn't hit the benchmark, but when you compare us to similar districts, we performed at a higher level. I do want to talk a little bit about what's going on at the state level with the state report card. As I've shared with the board, in the last biennial budget, the state legislation put a, put a portion of that that said, "We need to create a state report card study committee because the state report card is not working." What I mean by that is it's not easily understandable by parents and community members. It's not driving instruction forward in a way that's truly going to improve outcomes for students. And if you take a look at No Child Left Behind and Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the federal law, there's no data to truly support that a punitive accountability system like this report card is, is driving and causing better outcomes and improvements for students. So, they created this committee. It's comprised of six legislators, the superintendent of the state of Ohio and three superintendents. And I'm privileged to be one of the superintendents on the committee representing suburban school districts. But when we take a look at those recommendations, whether it's school superintendents, whether it's Fordham, whether it's Ohio Excel, which are various groups that have opinions about state report cards, every single group is recommending that this measure no longer be graded. If you look at the metric behind this... If you look at the metric behind this, as to what constitutes our grades, 75% is performance index, 25% is indicators. So what they're saying at the state level in these educational organizations is that this is important to rate. It's important to state and give information, but it's not important to give a grade to because this is a measure of poverty, not a measure of academic growth or academic growth in students. So just as a caveat to that, not that we're not going to continue to work and develop and grow, but it's an informational measure that many are questioning whether it should be rated or graded on the report card.
Is there any correlation to our results and the free and reduced population in our district? Is there any way you can make that relationship to other districts or?
You can make that, yeah. When they, when you talk about similar districts, that's one of the things. They, they look at socioeconomic status, they look at the financial stability of the community, they look at enrollment, diversity, things of that nature. So you, you could say, in terms of where we're performing to similar districts that have similar demographics, at least in these areas where we didn't meet the indicator, we're performing at a higher level than some of those other districts.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Before you go on, just to make sure I understand the data. So if we take math, the fifth grade math, we were one student away from meeting the indicator. So, and that, and the indicator, the, the benchmark is 80% are proficient or better. If fifth grade has 400 kids, that, that would indicate that 80 of those kids are still not proficient, even though we've met the standard.
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I don't want this to be misleading that if we, you know, if we had just one more kid hit the, that benchmark, we would be proficient. There's still a group of people that need work. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are under, that, that 20% of the 400 would give you 80 more students that are not hitting the mark. But as we take a look at the normal curve of student skillset and ability and how they enter our classrooms and our skills, there's also a natural part where it's unrealistic to think we're going to get 100% achievement. And so what we need to look at is we should see 100% of our students making significant growth. But based on their entry point in our school district and the, the, the work that's being done, not only in conjunction with our staff, but also outside, you know, the education of a student is more than just the seven and a half hours that they spend with us in school. I believe that we should be held accountable for making sure every single student in our district makes significant growth. I, I think to say that the, the, the other 80 students, that they will all hit that benchmark with the vast spectrum, or not spectrum, but span of student abilities that we see in our classrooms is, is not a realistic expectation. And that's why if you take a look at years ago, in the old No Child Left Behind system, there was, by this year, we would have 100% proficiency, proficiency rate in these areas. And that's why they scrapped it because it, it's nice to have goals, but it's nice to have realistic goals. And so that's part of what we have to look at is, are we seeing growth? And that's the measure where we spend a lot of time and energy and work on, at the same time while seeing how, at what level and how high can we get our students to achieve on these assessments?
Thank you.
But it is true, if one more student passed the test and you would have had 80%, and you would have met that metric.
That's correct.
In eighth grade math, you're down one student.
Correct.
What about seventh grade math? Is there any particular issue with 17 kids?
Yeah, so that's one. Thank you for bringing up that, that kernel. So as I, as we take a look at this, obviously, math seven is the outlier. And so, you know, not that 17 kids is a huge number, but as you take a look, that's, you know, four, a little over 4% of our students that were, were below that 80% mark. So a couple of things that, to point out, some of the work that we've, we've done. First of all, we noticed, this was a couple of years ago, that we needed more instructional time. Erin talked about that time component. We needed more instructional time at the middle school with our students in math and language arts. They were going from an elementary setting where they were getting 90 minutes of English Language Arts instruction and maybe 50 to 60 minutes of math. And then they would go to the middle school, and it's 42 minutes, you know, at best, that they were getting math and ELA instruction. And, you know, changing classes, you get in there, you get settled, you're down to about 35 minutes of instruction. That wasn't doing it. So last year was the first year that we instituted block scheduling or a double block of instruction in ELA and mathematics at the sixth grade level. So what I think is important to look at is math six is not on there. Math six showed significant gains in test results. And we believe there's a correlation between the instructional and contact time and where the students performed. We still have ELA six there, but if you look at the growth that cohort and that grade has made, they've made a significant amount of growth. In ELA seven, we have a double block of, we have double block of ELA last year, but we didn't have it for math. And so what they tried last year is for math, they said, everybody's just going to go to a normal period of mathematics. However, our students, based on assessment results, based on teacher feedback and parent input, our students in seventh grade that are struggling in mathematics, we're going to give you a double period of mathematics. It was a great idea. We tried it, but it didn't work. Having students that struggle in mathematics, stay in mathematics for 85 minutes in one block was not working. And so I think that's a, I can't say anything with, you know, a statistical relevance, but our, our belief and our educational opinion is that was not improving the students' math skills. So what they did this year, and talking with our teachers, they're very excited and seeing a much different approach and engagement level from our students, is all, our students that are struggling in mathematics go to the one period of mathematics a day, just like every other math student. But what they've done is they come back at a later time for a second math period where they're working on developing those lagging skills in mathematics that they need to be successful and to keep up with the pace of math instruction. So they're still getting that double touch point of mathematics, but it's in two separate time periods, which keeps the kids engaged and sustained. And then secondly, gives them the ability to teach really what is seventh grade math content at, in the, in the main class, and then hitting those deficit skills in the second. The last thing that I will say about the math scores is math seven is the first year where you see a deviation in, in student pathways. So you will start to see in, in math seven that we have some students that will go to algebra. In math eight, that math eight is truly just students that are taking math eight, which is a pre-algebra course. We have other eighth graders that are taking Algebra I. We have other eighth graders that are taking high school geometry. So you start to see, this is not comprised of every single seventh grader because some seventh graders are considered in the Algebra I scores. Math eight is not comprised of every single math eight student. You're taking our students that are most talented in mathematics and separating them out into the Algebra I test. So I think it's something to celebrate to say, we have what, like 30% of our kids that are, we have a pretty high number of kids taking Algebra I. So, you know, we have a significant number of students that are taking Algebra I that are ready for that high level math. So all of the students that, you know, are, are, are moving on the track to take pre-algebra as eighth grader and Algebra I as ninth grader, they're achieving at a pretty high level. So that's where we're focusing on and targeting with math seven. Any other questions on this slide? All right, so like Erin said, you know, same category she talked about. But one of the things, and I'm going to go to, this was at the top graphic of evidence-based instructional practices, and just expand this so we can see it. One of the things that Jenny's been taking the lead on and working with Erin and Andy and a team of people around the district is really defining not only what content, what rigorous content we want to, want to see implemented and taught at each grade level and each course for our students, but what are skills that are necessary for them to be successful, not only in school, not only in the classroom, but in life? And we call, you may hear people call it a portrait of a graduate. We, we call it our model Mustang, and it defines, it defines five competencies of skills that we think are important for students to develop a well-rounded education so that they can be successful in life. And you could see our competencies listed there, are innovative, resilient, collaborative, global, and empowered. So it's not that we're, we're not looking at content anymore. It's about taking a deep dive into content plus skills, which leads to deeper learning for our students. And so these are the skills that translate beyond content. And, and as some of our board members know, we have a business advisory council. And so when we talk to our business partners, what do they say about what they're looking for employees? First of all, they want their employees to show up. They want them to be effective communicators. They want them to be independent thinkers and problem solvers. They want them to be able to collaborate with others. They're not saying we want them to know the date of this war at this time. Not that that's not important, and not, that's not a part of learning. But we have to work as a school, is how are we developing the skills within students so that when they graduate, that they can find success in life? So that's a big focus of our work and what we're doing. Not just to say, hey, this is a great graphic, it's a wonderful poster, we're going to put it all around the buildings. But what our teachers did Tuesday with our administrative team is look at, what does a resilient learner look like in kindergarten? What does a global student, a global perspective student look like at the high school level? And how do we integrate that in, not as something new or additional, but how do we integrate it into our courses? And use the content to deliver and develop those skills in our students? The other things that we've done is, as Dave shared last time, we've now have one-to-one technology throughout the district, which is not just a great tool, but it's a great enhancement to how we deliver instruction in an engaging and meaningful way to our students. And if you look at the other part, you know, to, I'm going to brag a little bit. I'm proud of the work that we've done as a district. If you look at the research, what is the number one influence on student achievement? It's teachers. What is the number, what is the number one indirect influence on student achievement? It's principals. And so we've spent a lot of time and focus and work in developing the leadership capacity of our principals so that they can lead these efforts, efforts as the second most powerful influencer of achievement in our district. And they've done a tremendous job, and we've done a lot of work in developing, whether it's literacy, whether it's how we intervene with students that are, are struggling to access the content, or whether it's the skillset, or whether it's universally designed learning, whatever it may be, developing their skills so that they can lead this at the building level. And we have not only a coherence of purpose in our district, but a coherence in the work that we're doing to achieve that overall purpose. The other thing, and Erin mentioned what we're doing with Lexia and some of the programs at the elementary level. The exciting thing is our secondary teachers have said, hey, that's something that would be a great resource for us at the secondary level. How can we have a systemic platform to assess students' literacy skills and then help support and drive instruction to meet their needs? And we've started that relationship and that work to do that at the secondary level. And we talked about increased instructional time, what we've done in terms of seventh grade math to try and address that gap. Any questions on this slide? All right, so there's two other report card measures that we haven't mentioned. Improving at-risk K-3 readers and Prepared for Success. And Erin's going to talk about literacy to start.
Okay, so first, looking at the Improving at-Risk K-3 Readers. This is a measure that the state has come up with, and right now, it's the best that they have. But what it's actually measuring is how many of our students in grades K, 1, 2, and 3 are on an improvement plan? And then they follow those students, the same students, the next year. How many of those students perform on a different diagnostic measure, not the same one? And how do they perform? Are they at grade level? So it's somewhat of an arbitrary measure as far as the plans go. But what we want to focus on and continue to focus on is the number right there, the 100%. And so this is telling us that with the Third Grade Reading Guarantee, which is a law that Ohio put into place probably five, six years ago now, if students don't pass the third grade assessment, either the state assessment or an approved alternate state assessment, they can't go to fourth grade. And so our participation, our percentage of students meeting that and moving on to fourth grade is a 100%. If you look at the 87.5%, those are the students that met it via the state test. So the AIR test that you may hear. The 100% then, again, is how students met it in any possible way, which involves a different assessment that we give called the Terra Nova. What's really interesting to note is the number of students, I'm sorry, the students that meet this benchmark in third grade statistically are shown to be the students that go through school, graduate, and become productive members of the society. Conversely, students that don't pass this, and again, we don't have any in the district right now who have not passed into the fourth grade, but that's what they look at when planning future incarceration needs in cities, which is kind of a sobering thought. So there's a direct correlation between percentage of students that read at grade level by the end of third grade and those that don't. Questions with this measure?
You alluded that it's the best the state has.
It is.
With Cameron being on the committee, are, do we have, do you have suggestions for a better way to do it? Or it is the best that we have?
I'll let him address that, but we do feel there's a better way.
So last night, we had our first meeting with this report card group. And even though it was just an informational and procedural meeting, we did start to talk. And the two measures that came up from the legislation and the superintendents that are definitely most confusing to the public and are not measuring what they're, and reporting what they intended to measure, were the two measures that we're going to talk about here. So we all agree, they've changed the title of this. It's, in my opinion, and, you know, I just don't say this because we got a C in the measure, because the state says a C is you're making the growth that you should be making. But it's not truly looking at, are we preparing students with the skills necessary to be effective readers by the time they get done with third grade? That's really what the measure should be. And so there is a way to do that, and, and that's something that we're proposing is, when we look at this chart, we should be measured on, you, the state creates a test, how many students met the benchmark to be considered competent or proficient readers at the end of third grade? This whole idea is we're going to identify, based on local decisions, which means it's not comparable across the state, how a kid did on a test in fall that's locally selected and locally determined whether they're on track or off track. And then measure them again, and measure whether they went from off track to on track. There's not a lot of meaning in that measure, and it's not comparable, and it's not telling the whole story. So our suggestion and our work is going to be focused on, how many students are competent in reading by the end of the third grade? And we should be reporting that. That's a measure that drives forward instruction. It's easily understandable by teachers, by community members, by parents, and tells the story of how are we doing with literacy instruction in our school district? So the second measure that causes a lot of debate and discussion around school folk and the community and educational organizations is this measure Prepared for Success. It's another measure that I don't like. And again, I don't like it because I don't think it tells an accurate story. I have no problem with being held accountable and measuring and sharing how we're doing. But the measure is based in how prepared are students for all opportunities? The reason I don't like this measure is because I think it's convoluted. I'm going to explain it to you now, so if you're sleepy, you are going to, I'm going to, this will be the last thing that'll put you in a slumber. But it's convoluted, and it's focused on students that are going to college. If you talk about students prepared for all opportunities, that means gain full employment after high school. That means a career-based, you know, IT education. That means military. That may mean college. This is a college measure. So here's what they do. Bear with me. They take two cohorts of students, so two graduating classes. And they can't do it for, this report card, our report card this year is based on the class of 2017 and 2018. So this has nothing to do with the graduating class that just walked across the stage in, in June or May. So that means we had 1,042 students that are in this measure. This is an example of 10. Then what they do, that's our denominator. Our denominator is 1,042. That's the number of students in both of those graduating classes. Then what they say is, if you take a look at this blue section, you have to get a yes in one of those columns to be counted in the numerator. So I have to get an ACT or SAT remediation free score. If I do, I'm a one, I get a yes, and I'm a one in the numerator. Most of our kids take the ACT, and just as a point of reference, college remediation free score in English is 18, math 22, and reading is 21. So that's the first part you can get. The second category is I can get an honors diploma. If I, if I get an honors diploma, I get a one in the numerator. Or I can get an industry-recognized credential. We don't offer industry-recognized credentials as students that go through Strongsville City Schools. Polaris Career Center has industry-recognized credentials that they can earn on that, on that system. So it doesn't matter whether you get one yes, two yeses, three yeses, you count as one in the numerator. So it doesn't matter whether you get one yes, two yeses, three yeses, you count as one in the numerator. Have I lost you so far? Are we okay? So our numerator on our report card was 557. So out of the 1,042 students, we had 557 students get a yes in one of those three categories. Some of those students may have had three yeses or two yeses, but they only count as one. Then what they do is they say, okay, if you got a yes in the first column, we, we can, you can earn a bonus point. You can earn a bonus point of .3 if you earned a three or higher on an AP test. We don't do international baccalaureate here, so that wouldn't count for us, or three or more college credits. So if you, if you get that, all you need is one yes. Doesn't matter if you get all three or just two, you get a .3. So you see for student one, he or she earned a 1.3. Student two only earned a one because they had no yeses in the yellow column. And student three had no yeses in the blue, so they got a zero. So for our district, we had 300, of those 557 students that got to go over into the yellow column, we had 395 or 70% of them got the .3 bonus point. So if you add all that up, it actually is 557 plus 118.5 points. Whatever that math problem gives you, it gives us a percentage of 64.8% is our score on prepared for success. We got a C in this. It's an adjusted, even though it's a 64%, they mess with the grading scale, so a 64.8 is a C. We're doing what we should be doing for students. But I hope by my long-winded and boring explanation, you can see kind of an arbitrary measure that this is. I'm not recommending or saying that we shouldn't take a look at how we are preparing our students for success. I'm just asserting that maybe this measure isn't the best vehicle to do that. And the reason I say that is the state recently has changed its graduation requirements. Our current freshmen, the class of 2023, have a brand-new set of graduation requirements. My question is, if the state is saying this is acceptable to graduate from high school and it has nothing to do with ACT, college readiness skills, it has nothing to do with AP exams or IB exams or college credit plus, it has to do with a variety of seals and skills, then why aren't we holding our districts accountable on, are we preparing students for success based on the graduation requirements that the state has set forth? And what I put there in that red box there is the state has a strategic plan. And their strategic plan has one goal, and that goal is stated, I've already alluded to it before. That goal is stated there, nowhere in the goal does it say that the only pathway for success is through college or through ACT exams or industry-recognized credentials or the other areas that are there. Any questions on this measure? So with that, to wrap it up, I'm gonna turn it back over to Aaron.
All right, so having said all of that, what we do have to share is some exciting, some positive news. You know, although we don't love every measure on the report card, we know that in our district, we are doing the things through the Model Mustang, through all of the maker spaces and the innovations that we have going on to address some of those other skills that can't be measured, those forward-looking attributes. So global perspective and to be ready for next steps. So in looking at using a measure similar to, or exactly the same actually, as, as we did last year, where we take the GPA of all districts in the state of Ohio. So there's over 600 districts in Ohio. Looking at our GPA comparison, we're in the top 6.1% based on our 2019 report card. And so we feel confident that not only are we meeting the report card indicators, but we're also doing the things that'll make our kids college, career, military-ready.
That's an incredible number. 37 out of 608. We want to be.
It really is, yeah.
We want to be higher, we want to do better, but that's, that's really good. I mean, when you look at that report card, you don't get that, you don't get that how well we've done, right? Because you see those Cs on there, you think, what the heck, you know? But, but when you convert it over to like you guys do and we get it to something we can actually measure, it's incredible. I'm really proud of your, the 2020 plan is working. Keep at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last minute questions from the, from the board regarding this?
Nope.
Good job.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna ask Dan and Denny to come on up. We'll transition to the next presentation. Yes?
I'm gonna take a break. You guys, you guys are putting my family to sleep. So if you guys want to like snake out of here, if you guys want to go somewhere else that you're welcome to, if you want to stay, we're gonna talk scoreboards.
Pretty good evening. Thank you guys very much. So Dan, it's giving you guys some information that were sent to us, so you guys can review what we'll talk about. So over the course of the last, I'd say probably four or five months, the Bruiser Club and myself have met drastically finding ways to improve the overall high school experience for our student athletes. And one thing going back to the spring that we saw some issues with, or that I saw some issues with, is our functionality of our scoreboards. If anybody attended the regional baseball game, we hosted a regional baseball final, which is one trip from the state semifinals.
No scoreboard.
And the scoreboard went out.
Yep.
It was embarrassing. We got booed. It's something that I was never proud of and never will, and never will be proud of. So I went to Dan and the Bruiser Club and said, is there anything that we can do? So we've been meeting over the last, like I said, four or five months to start to devise a plan for scoreboard projects. So kind of the background, so I start with our gymnasium. For those of you that ever go to any basketball games and/or wrestling and/or volleyball, we have two scoreboards in there, one on the south side by the Mustang mural. That, and that's kind of our bigger scoreboard. That's our scoreboard with our stat panels. And then there's a smaller one that's on the north side of the gymnasium as well. The stat panels don't work, one. Two, we've had to train different people to use it. So currently with our scoreboard setup, we need two people to run our scoreboards. One to just to run the clock and the scores, the other person to run just the stat panels. It's tough to find people that know how to run the stat panels to have that working every single game. Last winter and, and spring alone, we had repairmen in there three times to fix the scoreboards. So that incorporated with the number of hours that we have to spend in trying to find game workers to work the stat panel and make sure that we have the best functional stuff for our base, for, for our basketball and our volleyball games is something that's been kind of an issue for us. So when I met with the boosters, we decided, and for the longest time, we had met even back last spring about doing a video board project. And our video board project was going to be having a video board on the south side where our stat panel was, and then have a scoreboard that was attached to that video board. And then on the other side, it would just be a functional scoreboard. The more that we dove into this, we started to realize that the things that we could do with our video board was starting to take form. So our first option was exactly what I talked about. A video board on the right-hand side, a regular scoreboard on the left, and then the ability to sell ads to help fund that scoreboard as well as to be able to broadcast things on the video board. So this was the first option that we kind of looked at. You know, did we want the video board on one side, scoreboard, and then, you know, to be able to go out and find sponsorships and ads to help fund that scoreboard. Another option, different company, the same kind of idea with the video board as well as a scoreboard. You know, obviously the difference in some of these quotes is, is the size. Okay, the size of the board, the size of the video board, the length of the scoreboard. And then obviously, you know, if it's the old bulb scoreboard or if it's the LED scoreboard to go with the video board. So we got these quotes from NEFCO, from Dectronics. This one would be on the opposite end where our other, on the north side where that smaller scoreboard would be, this would be just a picture of what that would look like, very basic board. Then we went, Dan, Dan and I, as well as Donthal, went to Cardinal Mooney. And Cardinal Mooney has a video board by a company called Score, Score Vision. Score Vision is a branch off of Huddle. For those of you that don't know Huddle, Huddle is our video editing system. So, so the people that used to run Huddle separated and now they started Score Vision. Score Vision was around for 10 years. It wasn't called Score Vision. Score Vision just is a branch of a bigger company and Score Vision's only been around for four years. So what Score Vision is, or what it allows us to do, is to have two, essentially two video boards in our gymnasium. There's no static scoreboard. There's no, you know, video board with the scoreboard. It's a video board. It looks like two large TVs. So on the south side of our gymnasium, we would have a 16-foot by nine-foot video board. And then on our north side, we would have a 10-foot by six-foot video board. The board is customizable, meaning there's no board like it that won't be Strongsville's. Strongsville will have the only board that's for Strongsville. And we can change the background every game, every match, every season, whatever we want to do. It's ours. It's only customized for us. And then each scoreboard has a different display per sport. So as you see basketball here, I'll show you, I'll show you some of the other sports of what we can do with the scoreboard with Score Vision. So that's our current setup right now on our south end. Okay, so with the Score Vision scoreboard, that's what we would be getting. Okay, so we'd be getting a video board, like I said, that's 16-foot by nine, that's just that, it's an all-out video. Then on the other side, that's the current board that we have. And if we place it with the 10 by six, that's the board that we would be looking at. The boards mirror each other. You can do different things on them. The thing that Dan and I liked and Don liked when we went to Cardinal Mooney to view this is this isn't just a athletic piece. There, there is an educational component with it. Score Vision has a curriculum that they provide the school district to allow the school district the opportunity to teach this to students. There's, there are school districts across the country that use this curriculum and then they have the accountability of the students to go and to do all of the game day experience for the sports. And that's their class project. So not only is that curriculum piece important, but also he showed us they actually FaceTime alumni speakers into the gymnasium for assemblies. Everything that is with Score Vision is run off of Apple TV. It's all run through software and you can FaceTime get speakers in. And there's a lot of educational pieces besides the athletic realm. With this and speaking with Dave is that we can be able to use, use BoxCast and live stream on this. So if we have our Meet the Mustangs night in the gymnasium, we can broadcast that onto the video screens. So there's a whole lot of different varieties for the use of this scoreboard than just the regular scoreboard, which we initially thought that we would like. So this is what the volleyball display board looks like. You saw what the basketball one looks like. This is what volleyball looks like. And we can interchange those at any time, any game, during the middle of a game, we can change it to have a different look. That's how unique these boards are. Yeah.
So there's really no scoreboard, you know? And as a traditionalist, I was struggling with that. There's no board with the numbers. But everything can change, as Denny said, during the game. So where we don't really have the stats available for anything wrestling or volleyball or basketball, we hit a button, whoever's there, and up comes all the stats on a break. We can put them in the sides, or we can make the scoreboard be the entire scoreboard. What the presentation we're doing tonight doesn't have, that this does is the ability to run these ads and the promos for the kids and things, a lot of things they do. When you go to the pro sports events, this is what this thing is capable of.
And then this is what it would be for wrestling. So you can tell the scoreboard changes just based off of sport. And then obviously, within these different elements, there are things that we can do as far as advertisement and sponsors during timeouts to promote more of the community, promote athletes. You know, I think one of the cool things we saw is that if we are live streaming and there's a timeout, we can take a replay of a, of a student making a three-pointer and we can broadcast that over the video.
Can we put on the diff? Can we put on the diff?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then this is another cool function is that you can see here during a timeout, you can do 30-second commercials. So if we have businesses that want to sponsor, we have the ability to do 30-second commercials during timeouts, even during pre-game to, you know, to help with some advertisement, to help with some sponsorship, but also to promote the community businesses, you know, as well as students. So one thing is that we can have student interviews broadcast, you know, during timeouts. Just like professional sports have the interviews with athletes, we can do that with this video capability. Getting into the specifics, so the boosters are asking the district to fund the two Score Vision scoreboards in the gymnasium at a cost of $125,000. The boosters will repay the district within five years, most likely sooner than that. As we talked to Cardinal Mooney, they paid theirs off in 16 months, 18 months? 18 months. And if you've ever been to Cardinal Mooney, it's not in the best location. It's kind of in the middle of nowhere, a smaller community. Yes, they have some big alumni there, and we asked them, they got no money from those big alumni. It was all through local businesses. Families paid dollars to have ads for their seniors and things up there. Initially, along with this, I think the boosters are gonna fund at the time of, of contract, when, when it gets to that point, is $30, is $30,000 initially. So really the ask would come down to $95,000. Then how will we repay this? I have worked over the last several months to come up with a tiered sponsorship program. I worked with Dan Martin and Dan Faust helped us, you know, to have a tiered advertisement system where we feel that we can gain a lot of advertisement based off of the tier system. I'll let Dan kind of talk about some things that we've already done and our funding numbers that we feel pretty confident that it's going to take us no time to repay the amount that we're asking for. Yes?
Quick question. Are you looking to replace not only the gymnasium, but also are you looking at baseball and softball?
Yes, that will be another discussion.
Phase two.
Did you want to talk now about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the boosters have changed our model through the work of many folks over the last couple of years. And we went to more of a self-help opportunity for teams and coaches. But it's allowed us through, through some different focus to raise a lot more money than we had been in the past. What that's allowed us to do is not only take care of the core needs through the athletic director and the programs, uniforms, et cetera, that we've talked about, how do we start doing more capital improvement, the things that, like a scoreboard? Well, we've been raising enough money that we, we'd love to get the ads that Denny talked about, but those are not going to be necessary in order for us to pay for it. We have $30,000 sitting aside for this project. And when we look at, I, I just pulled the numbers, we were revenue-producing about $60,000 five years ago. Last year we were at 168,000 and we're tracking at about 170,000. Now there's commitments for those things and we've let teams somewhat, you know, go, go work the Browns games, raise their own money to do the things you do. But what that's done is But what that's done is, it's allowed us to have the teams take that money, spend it in things they would have asked the boosters for. So that's what's allowed us this, this capital. So, you know, what I'm trying to do is not over-commit the boosters. This is my last year as president. Stop, it's too late. And, so, I don't want to leave a bill that can't be paid by the future boosters. But I'm confident enough in just where we're at now with the events that we have, the night at the races and the program ads and the golf tournament, that we would be able to cover our part of this over the five years on top of the ninety-five thousand. So let's face it, it's twenty thousand a year. We have thirty thousand now, and that's not all we have, we're looking at some other projects. So, we have the capability now with the fundraiser we're doing to pay for this, and still do all the things that we need to do, uniform-wise, and the things the school, the kids need for other things, to do this on top of that. Now, why I look at this is, we've got an opportunity to, for twelve to fifteen years, if we do this, to produce a lot of revenue that can be used for the sports and other things. And as Denny said, this is not just sports, this is movie night, right? They showed us movie night curriculum, it's allowing technology students to come in and create some of the, the videos that we can use. So there's a lot of people that can touch this beyond just sports. But, I look at it as, if this, if Cardinal Mooney and other schools we've talked to have paid it off in a couple of years, there's ten or twelve years of revenue stream that can be potentially the biggest revenue producer we have, as far as for the athletics. So, I feel confident that we can pay that off, but I think we'll pay it off much quicker and it'll become a, a very good revenue stream. This product is, I'll say, you know, I think we said there's two hundred schools that have it. We'd be the first one in northeast Ohio. Cardinal Mooney has it, but I know there's a couple of schools here looking at it locally. But, it would be something that we'd be proud of, it'd be something the boosters would like to do for the district and the kids. And that's where we're at, so, of course, take any questions on the finances.
When's the night at the races?
I'm the president, I don't know.
February twenty-second.
There you have it.
February twenty-second? And the golf outing?
Dates being determined.
Okay.
Denny, I have two questions.
Sure.
If I could. I noticed in the package that was handed out that there's a standard starter pack, and there's a game day enhancement pack that they're now including as a bonus type thing.
Correct.
Does that include the templates for all the sports, to your knowledge?
Correct.
Because I know the starter pack, it says fifteen fixed design sport animations for one sport.
No, it does include every sport. So, and we asked that, and not only are we getting this, we're also getting locker room clocks in the boys and girls locker rooms that sync up to the scoreboard. So at halftime, the coaches will know exactly how much time's left, and they're also providing us backboard lights. So when the, the buzzard sounds zero, the, the backboard lights light up just like at a professional game.
Second question is, I, I looked real quickly through the installation requirements, which you guys may not have had a chance to look at, but it seems like there's a lot of peripheral support required from, like Brechner's people, true?
Yes, we've, we've met several times. I think the average cost that we looked at, or the cost of what Dave's office is, as well as Steve's, is right around three thousand for all the, the cables that we'd have to run, power that we'd have to run. Just so you know, these are LED boards, so the energy is gonna be less, even if we kept them on, you know, twelve hours a day, we would only be using about fifty percent of what the LED power is on, on those scoreboards.
And they give you two choices of different LEDs, I saw?
Correct, correct.
One's more expensive than the other, no doubt? Which one were we going for?
The less one, cheaper one.
Is that the right decision?
Yeah, yeah. It, there's, how they kind of explain it, you, you won't be able to tell what the difference is. It's just the brightness of it in certain, certain atmospheres. So that's how she explained it to me.
I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of advice. When you put a lift of any kind on that gymnasium floor, three-quarter inch subfloor, and you're gonna have to get sheets of it, because when you come off the terracotta or wherever that, that hallway is, you're gonna have to run that over on top of those pieces of boards. Because if you don't, that floor suspended, and it'll crack, it'll break, it'll snap. So, three-quarter inch subfloor, and just lay out different sheets of it throughout the entire floor. Okay? If you need me, if you need my help, just call.
I will touch on some of the install stuff here shortly, too.
Hey, Denny?
Yes?
First of all, thank you to the boosters for wanting to step up to do this. That's, you know, incredibly generous of all the people that support boosters. I'm hearing two issues that we are having to deal with. First of all, do we want to accept your generous gift and basically bankroll it? So, we have to, as a board, decide, is this something the district wants to have and to maintain? So that's an, an issue that, you know, we have to talk about. Some specific questions I have is, I, I think this seems wonderful. What about for the rec basketball teams that come to, is this scoreboard something that they're gonna be able to operate? Do they have to pay somebody to operate this? Has that entered into any discussions?
Yeah, so, I'll back up a little bit, there's some other features that we're getting. So, yes, they would be able to, everything is operated via a iPad, it's it. So we can have one person do the clock, as well as the ads, as well as the videos, that's it. If we have a class run that, then obviously that class would be responsible for running the ads, the programs, you know, the game day package. We are with this because we are, we are saving energy and power. We are able to leave on that scoreboard for whenever we want or for whoever we want. I, I guess I don't know if the rec has ever really used our scoreboards.
They use scoreboards.
We have small tabletop scoreboards that are utilized, and that's, I can't say specifically, but I know SBL have used those. Not, not tabletop like the flip.
Right, and I mean, well, they're in all the gyms too, they're everywhere, but, okay.
And then with this, which I failed to mention before, is this scoreboard comes with a app. So if you're not at a game, it has live scoring right on your phone. So if you're on your phone, or you can't make a game, and you pull up the app on your phone, it'll tell you exactly what's on the video board. It'll tell you who scored the last bucket, if it was a two-pointer, three-pointer field goal, and that's for every game. And then we can also incorporate that with some advertisements. So, any game, anytime that scoreboard's on, the app is essentially live.
And then how is it protected so that there's no damage to it? Is there a cage around it, or I mean, what's?
They do make a screen, they've said out of the two hundred schools that they're in right now, they don't use any screens. It can withstand lacrosse balls, baseballs even, basketballs. Because that was one of our first questions that we asked. And, you know, at Cardinal Mooney, they're not as high, and he said, we've had kids throwing basketballs and it's stayed perfectly fine. I talked to the CEO today, which, by the way, the service has been outstanding, and the CEO was grateful to take my call. He said, just so you get into perspective what kind of quality this is, he's like, straight, straight Jesuit down, down in Houston, Texas. They were the first school to install, they had the hurricane come through there, power outage on the whole street, the scoreboard still stayed on. So he's like, that's, that's the type of quality that we're getting, correct, correct. Yeah.
I just have a question, because I will tell you that boosters bought all the plaques for the conference championships, and they got broke. So, you know, that was a question, I just looked at it, I thought, how is a kid gonna try and bust one of these? You know, could it happen in a gym class? And we did talk about being able to buy the protective, but they said it hasn't. I would say this, if we find a break, we're gonna have to start looking at buying the protective shields.
And then, where does the sound come from? Do we have to have a special sound system? Is the sound built in? Is there an extra sound bar?
So, the whole entire system is, it plugs into our current sound system. So, there's no additional sound system needed. Any sound, audio, video that comes through the board is through our sound system, as well as the video that's on the board.
Is this something you can use for coaching? You know, they can videotape their kids, you know, practicing plays, and then go, okay, this is where you messed up, and?
Yeah, so, so that's a good question, because we talked when we were at Cardinal Mooney, that's the thing that I asked. So, our huddle video can show up on that screen. So if they are filming practice, they can stop a play of what they saw and put it up there, and they can watch exactly what they did wrong or what they did right, they can review it. Also, if teams wanted to use it for their game day reviews, they have that capability to put the video up from Huddle and watch previous game film. Cardinal Mooney uses it for heart rate monitors during their PE classes, they put all their heart rate monitors up there, and you can see which kids, it's funny, because we saw the one picture, we're like, this kid's ready to pass out. I mean, so, I mean, it was pretty cool how they tried to incorporate the educational piece, not just the athletic piece.
Right, keep thinking outside the box type deal. Morning announcements, all kinds of things.
The key was, if you can do it on a iPad, you can do it, you can put it up on the screen.
Right.
So, there's a lot of things that I'm sure that will develop this.
Do you know how old our current scoreboards are?
Ooh, that's a good question, I don't know.
Ancient.
Old as dirt.
Yeah, I mean, the, the lights don't even work.
Okay, great, again, thank you for bringing this to us, appreciate that.
So just, as Colonel asked about, you know, the district responsibility with a lot of install work. So meeting with all of our different departments, it would take them approximately twenty days to conduct the work that they needed to get done. And that would include making sure that all of the, the cat wires are run, all of the electrical and power and, and all that is squared away. Once we get that done, then they bring their own company in. They do work with a company that's in Ohio to come and install it. It is a two-day install, and then the third day, they spend the entire day training whoever wants to use it. The president that was at Cardinal Mooney showed us, and he's like, it, it is very simple to use when you're scoring. It'll have, for basketball, one, two, or three, you hit the one, two, or three, if it's a two-point bucket, hit two. As soon as you hit the two, it drags down the roster, and you select a person, and then the stat panel shows up with who scored that point. It's that easy to do. So that's kind of what theirs would be. Just a hypothetical, if things happen, we would look at, you know, the week, you can see that's kind of where we don't have any home games, obviously, you know, the later on that, you know, this happens, the later on in the school year or the winter sports season that we get.
How soon do you need to go ahead to hit that schedule? Do you need it tonight, or do you need it two weeks?
Timeline really, to be hon- I mean, we would like it sooner than later. I mean, I'm.
Okay.
I think, I think my, what I, tonight would be great, so that we can get it in by this late, right?
If, if you were to do it tonight, this would only mean that we would only miss the first two weeks of the season. Whereas, you know, any later time, with all the holidays, with Thanksgiving, with Christmas break, you know, staffing issues here, you know, people taking off for their vacations, you know, you're probably looking at later in January for this then. So where are we headed? So, the vision for Strongzol Athletics, I've, you know, I've kind of talked about, is we're always striving to be the model program. We want people to come into Strongzol High School and ask us what we're doing, you know, to be successful. So, we've already had some people inquire, you know, about some of the things that we're doing here, as far as how we are running our programs to get the success that we're getting, and I want that to continue. I've always wanted just to make sure that we can market all of our student athletes, our programs, to the fullest that we can, as well as the community gives us so much, you know, to be able to market the community, you know, businesses as, as well. And then obviously the last one is being able to generate a steady revenue for the next ten, twelve, fifteen years for the athletic department. Then, future considerations, as Mr. Grozen mentioned, baseball, softball, and the necessity of, of their, of those current boards, which I think we'll hopefully come up with a solution later on.
Just to, just to add to what Denny was saying, when, when we met and discussed the scoreboard project, they have, you know, recommendations for the baseball and softball scoreboards. In terms of like they talked about, asking the district to support this, you know, there's, there's different requirements that we as a district have to follow, in purchasing equipment over a certain amount, which these scoreboards were, versus a, a, a five oh one C three, purchasing that and donating it to the district. So, and there's still some work to be done on the baseball and softball scoreboards. And because of the depth of the discussion and the uniqueness of the gym scoreboard, we thought it would be best to separate those into two. But just for clarity's sake, the proposal from the boosters is a total of four scoreboards. Two of them would be the video inside, a baseball and a softball scoreboard. And that, the district would support this effort through purchasing the baseball and the softball scoreboards, and the boosters would support this through reimbursing the district for the full cost and the annual subscription fee for the two video display boards in the gymnasium. Is that accurate, Dan and Denny?
Yeah, we took the expensive ones.
Yeah, that's right, you did take the expensive.
So what you're, basically?
And I will say this too, we, when we first, we had to vote to approve this as the boosters, to come here for this proposal, which we did. We did approve up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Actually, we, Denny was able to negotiate some discounts further, and that's how we got to this one twenty-five. But that also allowed us, Dookie asked the question about, we could help support the three thousand for the install cost from Mr. Brechner's group.
Okay, but if, I'm understanding what your ask is, is that you want the district to float ninety-five thousand upfront, which you're gonna pay back over time for this scoreboard, basically, right? You're gonna pay, give thirty thousand upfront, and then we, the ninety-five thousand difference is gonna come from the district until we get paid back. So it's basically an interest-free loan for us to get this nice scoreboard in the, in the gym.
That is perfect. I think that we did a five-year commitment because that is roughly twenty thousand a year. That is no problem based on what we're having come in now. But, the anticipation is, the revenue stream will ask to pay it back much faster.
And is the five thousand software cost is included in the one twenty-five for the first year?
Correct.
Okay. You're comfortable with this, Cameron?
Well, I think we've got, you know, we've spent a lot of time together, and I'd just like to thank, you know, George and, and Dave and Steve and Denny and Dan. I, I know you've put a lot of hours answering a lot of questions, and, and our team has as well. There's, there's, to be honest, there's still some questions that we have to answer. One of those is, you know, you guys have done a great job of addressing a lot of those. You know, one of those questions is, we have to look at this as a district, is we own the scoreboard. We're making the purchase, even if they would donate it, it's a gift to the district, we own the scoreboard, and we need to make sure that this scoreboard is gonna make, meet the needs moving forward. You know, one of the things that we have questions about, or we need to continue to have a little bit of time to do, is to accurately look at the contract. And George has resources that he's been contacting to look at that contract to say, is what the CEO is verbally telling us reflected in the contract, because we are buying a software program. And there's nothing wrong with that, but that's what we're buying. We're buying a software program that's run through an app, or, or through Apple TV. And so there's that piece of, it is a newer technology, and are, is that sustainable moving forward? Everything that we've had so far has said yes. But that's a part of what we still need to answer and have a lawyer accurately look at that contract. I know one of the booster members has looked at the viability of the company. Because we're not buying a static scoreboard, which was in the, you know, first couple of slides, we're buying a, a piece of software, and what should happen if this company does not successfully move on in the future? How long will that software live on, and what's the sustainability of that? And I don't know, Dan, if you want to address that now or later?
Yeah, so I can, I can talk about, so, part of my conversation with the CEO today was answering some of these questions that we had. And, you know, he, I mean, he assured me that, you know, and Keith Howson did a lot of research on this, that they are a reputable company, they're on, their board of directors is the CEO of Crocs, the CEO of the Houston Texans. So they have some pretty big players in play here that have invested a lot. They're growing at a pretty good rate. The other thing that we had questions on was the warranty, and is the warranty gonna cover the board, the software? So in my conversation with the CEO, it was, it covers everything. It even covers the Apple TV, it even covers everything for. So, in my conversation with the CEO, it was, it covers everything. It even covers the Apple TV. It even covers everything for the first three years that's in that rack. The five-year warranty covers the whole entire board. If for some reason they were to ever go out of business, all we have to do is find software that plugs in and it works. And there are software companies out there that could do the same thing for us without having to purchase the whole board.
Can we take our time, have an attorney look at the contract, just double-check the contract? And have a special meeting next week?
Well, there's a couple of options. Um, the one last thing that I just wanted to mention in terms of where I'm at with it, there are also a lot of, a, a lot of tech specifications that we are responsible for. The board basically has to be plug and play for ScoreVision. So there's a lot of infrastructure work that we have to do, and Dave's been spending a good deal of time with his department looking at that to make sure, um, you know, that we can meet those, we can meet those specifications, but the, the, the time, the work, the materials, uh, because as, as it's been explained to me, every aspect, whether it's the clocks in the locker rooms, the scoreboards, or the backboard lights, are all hardwired. And so that means that we have to, we cannot just run cable to something in the gymnasium. There's a dedicated server. I'm looking at Dave because I, I think I'm saying the right thing. But this goes back to a dedicated server that runs the software. And that dedicated server has to be in a temperature-controlled room that is some distance away. It's in the assistant principals' area of the high school, correct? That's the closest closet where we would go to. So there's also a span where you can only go so far without degradation in the line and the connection and the signal between the device and the ca- and, and the cables. So those are things that Dave has done a tremendous job looking at, but we still have some questions that we may, uh, that we need to answer to make sure that, um, we're all on the same page with what needs to be done. So, in terms of what options the board has, the options the board has is, option A is to approve what they've presented. We have a contract from ScoreVision as is. You can do that tonight if you would so choose. Option B is to approve and give us the authority that once we have these questions answered, to enter into a contract with that, with ScoreVision for an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Option C goes back to what Mr. Grozan said, is we get direction, go back and answer these questions, come back at a later time when you've had those questions answered, and the board will take action on, uh, on a recommendation, whether it's at a special meeting, whether it's two weeks from now at a regular meeting, whether it's sometime in the future. So, those are the three options. George, anything that I missed that you would like to share as well?
I think you touched on the, the options, and just from my point of view, I've reviewed the, the quotes with Denny and, and the team. And also, um, there's, the contracts that were mentioned, there's three different types of contracts that they've asked us to sign off on. What was the sales, or for, what was the sales order? Uh, um, a standard terms of agreement, end-user agreement, and a standard installation plan agreement. And with it being software, there were questions around the so- the software, uh, what happens if the company ceases to exist? The terms of that software, um, the content, the content is housed on their servers, um, and the warranty items. So those are the questions that we want to get shorted up with and, uh...
So, why don't we have an attorney look at the contract, all three contracts, right? And call on the special board meeting next week?
I don't think we need a special board meeting.
Or we could approve not to exceed, once you have, once you, once they've agreed to the, to the terms of the contract and everyone, Cameron and his team and the lawyers and Dave are all, all in agreement that they're good to go.
I mean, if this was under fifty thousand, you could approve it without us, right? Fifty or twenty-five?
You know, if it's under fifty, then he can approve it.
Would this be considered a capital improvement?
No, fifty was if it was a construction project or change orders. Uh, this is, this would be twenty-five.
Okay, so actually, all we would be doing is increasing that limit to one twenty-five at Cameron's discretion to approve it.
But it would be ninety-five thousand dollars.
No, we're still, just to be clear, we would pay, the, the district would pay the full a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're, we're not, they're not paying them first and we're paying the difference. We're paying the full a hundred and twenty-five. The boosters...
They borrow money.
Is that where your hat is? Because I know you're wearing a hat before you came in here.
The boosters would then write us a check for thirty thousand dollars that George would put against that account, uh, balance.
Okay, well, subject to, subject to the required reviews of the contracts, the legalese and all that stuff, I think we should go with B, uh, which is to give Cameron the authority to commit if all those requirements are met. Because I know if we don't get going on this, it's going to put you guys behind. There may be some glitches anyway. There always are in these kind of projects.
So I would, I would suggest, uh, the latter. I understand that the rush is, the, the urgency, I mean, not the rush, the urgency is, is the timeline and being able to have it in place as soon as possible for basketball. But I think there's enough questions, and I think we have enough time with the next board meeting coming up. Um, you know, I, let me start by saying once again to this, uh, to the boosters, thank you. It's tremendous, right? Um, why wouldn't we want to accept your generosity? But at the same time, you know, some of the questions I have, it seems like the success of the program of this, of this concept is based on having people to do the content creation. They have the curriculum. We haven't discussed at the, at the high school level whether we can implement the curriculum. To be successful, it needs to be a class. It needs to be something that pe- that kids sign up for. That opens up a, a whole different conversation that we haven't started yet. But I'd want to, uh, we need to have it, because otherwise it's not going to be successful. Um, the idea of generating revenue is great. But if we don't have those questions answered ahead of time, we're going to have a very nice scoreboard, and I love scoreboards. Uh, we're going to have a very nice scoreboard, but ultimately, we have a TV, and if we don't generate the content, how are we going to get the headshots? How are we going to get the little videos, et cetera? Um, so I think there's a lot that, uh, we should discuss and go forward. I'm comfortable saying, "Thank you," and let's keep this conversation going. There's no, I, I don't think we need to say not to exceed or any of that other things. I think we can do our due diligence, and if the, uh, time is, if the, if those questions are answered, we'll be able to come to a meeting and approve it and say, "Thank you very much," and your generosity's, uh, much appreciated. But similar to our turf project, it becomes a burden. And I think the board would, I, I know, I, I don't want to speak for the board. For myself, I, I would want that, those questions answered. We talked about, everybody says you can throw a baseball at it and it's not going to break, et cetera. I just want to know what the number is if it does break, because buying the s- the protective screen after it's cracked, we're buying another board, and then we're putting the protective screen on. So it behooves us to know what's it going to cost? Because that's our, in my mind, that's our worst-case scenario. If we don't put the screen up and somehow Strong- someone in Strongsville figures out how to break it, the district now has to buy a board to replace it. So I'd like to, you know, I think it's reasonable for us to know what's those fir- worst-case numbers. And then ultimately, um, I think it's reasonable that we separate the projects. And I think the rationale that the boosters came up with for supporting the video boards and, and saying that the district should support the other boards, I'd like to see that as a whole package. I'd like to see all of those numbers together so that we're not, we're not looking at it as separate pieces of the puzzle. We need to get those baseball and softball scoreboards fixed. Um, George's committee for the facilities development committee, you know, the only reason the scoreboards need to be fixed is because we neglected them. And I'd like to see the facilities development committee come back and add that, I'm assuming it already is part of their puzzle, but if it isn't, let's get it part of their puzzle, so that we're never in a position again of having scoreboards, light bulbs that we can't buy and we can't find, and we can't find people to replace them, and we bring guests into our, uh, city, and we have that gun our face.
Do we have a working scoreboard right now? Is it working in the basketball?
We do, but the stat panels do not.
You can't, like, play number five, that...
So you could, you could spend forever studying everything and never get anything done.
So, just to... Do the scoreboards, do the scoreboards, when they come out of the box, right? And I know we have the class that, um, that, it seems like, that seems like a, uh, something that's over and above. When you take it out, you've got standard templates, right? And you've got, you can get the pictures of the players on there. You don't need the class to design that, right?
No, correct.
Right, so everything's pretty much prepackaged. And then you can take it to the next level with the class, where the kids can have interaction and learn things. But right out of the box, when you put it up on the wall, this thing's going to work, right? And you're going to have two iPads that run, that run it, and you're good to go. Then, then we would have time to develop the curriculum and figure all that, that part of it out, similar to what we did at Stadium, right? When, and then you took the, the lead, a lot of that, and got a lot of that programming going and made those boards even better. Um, but that took time to do it. So I, I think coming out of the box, we're, we're in good shape, but there, there's a lot of questions, so...
Yeah, and the, the company provides us with three percent inventory of, of everything that they set up. Meaning, if a panel on the board were to break, we already have those pieces here to replace it. So it's not like we have to outsource it or go and find it or wait, or, or wait for someone, you know, to replace it. So everything that they install or that we have, again, this was a conversation today that I had, is that we have three percent inventory of, of everything that they have.
Panel is made up of smaller panels. So if one does break, it's not replacing the whole board, it's replacing the...
Carpet squares.
Right.
Exactly.
And the only, the only other thing that I, I would, uh, recommend or consider, if we go back to the, the one that showed an example...
Yep, and I do have some other examples to show you too, so...
So, I gen- I generally like the idea of the commercials, the timeouts or what have you. But I don't know if we've talked to any business partners that might be interested in advertising or whatever. It'd be nice not to have advertising all the time. I think one of the things that we like about high school is, high school sports, athletics, et cetera, is there's a little bit of, of purity to it. And it's not the Cleveland Browns or the Indians, and everything has an advertiser and everything has a sponsor. So I'd be interested to see if there was a way to balance that.
Yeah, we can turn those off anytime we want. We can keep them on for two seconds, we can...
And I recognize I'm messing up with the revenue model, that if you're not advertising everything, it could have, it could, uh...
Cameron and I sat together at a Brunswick game, and they had a panel that ran forty ads all the time. I think this would be less intrusive than maybe that, something going on the whole game where we are flashing it. But, um, you know, the reality is, this is where folks are headed. Um, and as we've looked at this overall, uh, marketing plan that Danny's been working on, and a piece of this would be the ability to run it once the news is out here.
Cameron, what's your recommendation? What would you, what would you like to see tonight?
I think, I guess what, what would be helpful for me is, is, I, I don't feel comfortable, I appreciate all the work that you've done. But I think the onus is on us to answer these questions.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I think there's, there's avenues that, although I appreciate that we want to have this for the basketball season, I don't think having it for one part of a basketball season outweighs the questions that need to be answered.
So you're not comfortable yet?
I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable yet, but what I would say is that the, the options to, really, the timeline is predicated on our ability to internally get this work done. Their work is quick. So when you take a look at how, what, what is the difference between when the board approves it to when it gets done? The longest timeframe is us, because of the amount of work that needs to be done.
It's twenty days on that thing. That's a lot of days work, right?
Right. It's a lot of days work, um, because you're pulling lines, you're, you're capping li- that's right, yeah. Yeah, you, you want David to just kind of share enough?
District employees doing this work as well. It's not outsourcing any of this work.
With that twenty di- twenty-day timeframe, would take, uh, two of my IT team members to run those lines while still meeting just the emergencies and possible special projects they've already attended to. So some of their general maintenance things that they do throughout the district would go undone during that twenty-day timeframe. Um, and that's if we don't hit really any big snacks, um, because there was some additional time we added. But like Cameron said, um, we would have to run about thirty lines of CAT six, uh, cable. It's about, you know, before, um, one of the schematics we had was about seven thousand two hundred feet of cable. Um, I, we received another, uh, diagram on Tuesday from them, which included the locker room and the billboard, which the original ones did not. That might move us up to possibly eight thousand feet of cable now. Um, and that, where we have to go from the assistants closets, assistant principal data closet, you know, through their ceiling, through the hallway, through another hallway, through the girls' locker room, going through the walls to try to get all this to the, where they need to be, um, and stay under a one-hundred meter or three-hundred-and-thirty feet restriction of the cable. Um, which is, um, going to be a new issue, because, um, we might have to redesign one of the schematics, um, with them so that our cable can meet the far locker room, um, and still be within the, uh, limits of the courts.
So I think it, when I look at this in, in a big picture, um, I think there's, there's an importance to look at this as a collective package with the baseball, softball, and the, the main gym scoreboards. I also take a look at the fact that we're talking about, I, I believe we can get our que- I have less questions tonight than I had this morning. And, and so I appreciate the work that, that they've done to answer those questions. But I think as you take a look at, at minimum, we're talking about two additional weeks. I, I think that's incumbent upon us to do our due diligence, to take a look at that, take those two weeks to get those questions answered. Um, and then if we get those questions answered, we get feedback from, from the lawyer on, uh, you know, that, that component of the contract. Uh, we take a look at some of the tech things and make sure we're all good to go. Um, you know, instead of the boards being ready, we don't have a lot of games over winter break. I don't, maybe one or two games at home. So instead of the boards being ready, you know, by the twentieth of December, maybe they're ready by the second week of January. Uh, I, I think, I think that's not an insurmountable difference in time.
Well, that's your recommendation. I don't see any point in going against your recommendation, obviously. So we wait until the next board meeting, get all our questions answered. Hopefully, if, uh, if you can get that information out to the board members as you get it, so that we can be prepared, and if we have additional questions, we can do that. And then you go from there. Thank you for all your work. Thanks to the boosters.
I do, if, if anybody cares...
More slides, come on.
Well, if anyone wants to see, we do have samples of what it actually looks like in action. And the student intro is the one I highly recommend. Um, Dr. Ryba wants to play that quick. It's a quick one. But, but it's just like Monday Night Football, how the students introduce themselves and they say the elementary school that they went to. It's kind of cool.
Yeah, that's cool.
Hunter Cash, West Elementary. Bobby Allen, Southeast Elementary School. Jay Johnstrom, Earth Grove Elementary. Anthony Kuzin, West Point Elementary. Charlie Ostraker, North Elementary. Adam Akaki, South Prairie Elementary. Logan Agler, South Prairie Elementary. May Dominguez, West Elementary. Justin Linsky, North Elementary. Jackson Johnson, Wild Rose Elementary. Jason Alau, South Elementary.
Cool. That's just some of the capabilities that it has, so...
Excellent.
Can you make that intro for me when I come into the gymnasium?
Well, I was going to have you do our pre-game message.
That could be the new board thing, will be zooming.
I've changed my mind, Danny. I've changed my mind.
Sixty seconds with the superintendent, okay.
Everybody has to watch sixty seconds with the superintendent, yes.
That's right, I like that.
Well, it's excellent work, and I think taking a little more time is prudent, so...
Student services?
Thank you, guys. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, back to the agenda. We do have one item under student services, um, be resolved upon the recommendation superintendent that we enter into agreement with the United Servo-Palsy Association for Special Education Related Services for placement of a student with disabilities during the nineteen-twenty school year, uh, attending full-time of part-time beginning November eleventh, two thousand nineteen, for a total amount of sixty-five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars, and ex- as found in Exhibit A. Any questions there?
Nope.
Under human resources, we do have a grievance resolution memorandum of understanding. Be resolved the recommendation that, uh, the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees Local Two-Ninety be accepted, the terms of which have been reduced to writing and provided to the board. Any questions? That, with that, that ends my superintendent's report.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to consent calendar. Uh, can I have a motion?
Tell me.
Thank you, dude. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Um, all items with asterisk are approved in one vote. Any discussion on any of those items? Any discussion on any of those items? George, take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item eight, uh, board policy, second reading of those two policies. Uh, policy, advertising, commercial activities, promotional, uh, political activities, it's the second reading, we'll discuss them on the third. Uh, that brings us to the Board of Education. Other, anybody have any others?
Yeah. Veterans Day, uh, Monday, and, uh, schools, uh, thank you, Cameron, and all the, all the principals and instructors, teachers that are having events. They all have nice, uh, mem- memory-type events, and it's nice if, uh, any veterans out there, Chris, you can get over and, uh, attend those, it's very nice, and the veterans appreciate it very much, though what the kids do. So just wanna remind everybody about that.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
I, I'm gonna go out of, uh, pattern, but I did wanna announce that Polaris Career Center has a registration night coming up on November twenty-first from six to seven thirty PM. And the reason I highlight that is 'cause our board meeting is then, and it'd be a little late to announce it then. But if there are any, uh, students that are interested in, uh, what, uh, the different programs are that Polaris has to offer, uh, like I said, uh, November twenty-first from six to seven thirty PM, you'll get to visit and see the new campus, the new Polaris Career Center. Uh, you'll get all your enrollment-related questions answered, you'll meet with, uh, parents and students, we'll meet with Polaris instructors, you'll tour, tour the new labs, you'll get free refreshments, and, uh, you have the chance to win great door prizes. So, uh, that'd be a great time to, uh, take a tour and see if Polaris is right for you. Um, so I suggest that to any parents and, uh, students. And then I also wanted to give a shout-out to Lex Krupka, who is, uh, joining us from the Boy Scouts, uh, working on one of his, uh, citizenship in the community, uh, merit badges, and I wanted to compliment him. Uh, I saw Dan Martin's eyes glaze over a couple times, and we had to wake him up, but, uh, Lex, uh, stayed awake the whole time, and I hope he, uh, found it interesting and, uh, gets his marriage ba- merit badge very soon, and we, uh, thank him for his attendance.
Good deal. Jane, anything?
No.
All good. Uh, executive session?
No.
Thank God. All right, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I know you wanted to do that, so...
Yes.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, dude. Vote.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-two PM.